Hello, everyone. Welcome to our trustee webinar. We're very excited to have you today. I can see that people are still joining, so we're just gonna wait a minute and I'm going to be handing off this little guy to my husband. Sorry for the delay. But we will be beginning in just a moment. We're just waiting for everyone to join. And we're happy to be able to be speaking to you all tonight and we're happy you could you could take time out of your busy schedules on a weeknight to learn about trustees tonight.
Well, we have a lot of time given that we're fired. Well, I can't hear you. You gotta turn on your mic.
Amelia, how many people are you expecting?
I think we had over two hundred RSVP.
Very good.
So, yeah.
Are you still taking people to come in or if they didn't register, you won't let them in?
Well, I'm not able to send the link with the meeting running now, but there were a few people I sent it to. I shot it off last minute to them.
All right, sorry about that, everyone.
Hi, Sleen.
Hello. So we thought the baby would would be quiet, but she's a little too fussy to sit with me, so he's gonna be with that. Sorry about that. So I'd like to begin by welcoming Ms. Paula de Medo Giovanotti and Mr. Michael Del Grande. They are both trustees. I believe Paula is with Toronto. Correct me if I'm wrong. I think you're New York.
Dufferin Peel.
Dufferin Peel, forgive me. And Michael is in Toronto, if I'm not mistaken.
Auto Catholic, yes.
Toronto Catholic. So we are very happy to have you both joining us tonight to answer some questions and share your experience running for trustee. But also share experience that you've share your experiences since becoming elected, what it means to be a trustee. What impact you can make on the school system and what parents can expect of the trustees that they elect. As you know, now in Ontario, we have the Ford government threatening to remove trustees from the from the school boards. So it's very important that we talk about this now. And another reason we decided to have this webinar is because we're exactly a year away or just under a year away from the elections. For new trustees, the school board elections, they will be taking place next October. So we thought it would be important to educate parents on the process of the trustee elections and as well encourage those who might be considering running. So I'm going to hand it over to Amelia now, who's going to be giving a short presentation. On school boards and the importance of trustees and how the election process works. And then we'll be moving into having a presentation, a little bit of like Q and A back and forth between Mr. Del Grande and Mrs. Paula, Mrs. De Medo Giovanotti and myself. So I'll give it to you, Amelia.
All right, I'll share my screen here. Everybody see my screen, okay?
I could see it and now it cannot, Amelia, so.
Okay.
It must have been shared and then it went away.
Let's see. I don't share my screen often enough to be really proficient at this, so bear with me.
Oh, now it's easy. Yeah, you've started.
Perfect.
It's pretty clear, so you might not have to make it.
Full screen it?
But if you want to try.
Okay, let's see the window. Full screen, okay. All right, so I thought I would start with a very basic question. What is a school board trustee? They're very important, but a lot of people aren't totally sure what exactly their role is. So the role of the school board trustee, they're elected officials, elected officials. They're elected during municipal elections, which are every four years, and they represent the parents and taxpayers of their local school boards. So in Canada, trustees help to set policies, approve budgets, make decisions about what happens in schools. And on a more specific to parental rights note, they can have a say in what things are taught in the curriculums. Or if parents are unhappy about things being taught in their local school, they can bring that concern, that parent's concern forward to the Board of Trustees and the Director of Education. So essentially, there's a link between the community and the education system. Which leads to my next point of why do they matter? So there are key people in your child's school board, or if you don't have children in the school board, as a taxpayer. They can reflect and carry what, like if your opinions of what you want to see done in your schools. They can communicate that to the school board. So they can help shape policies on sex ed, gender identity, materials taught in classrooms. They can control how your tax dollars are spent in certain circumstances. So essentially trustees are the first line of defense for parental rights. The next question, very commonly asked, is why do school boards matter? So school boards are the local voice of parents and communities in education as a whole in Canada. They are trustees are supposed to ensure local accountability. So that the board is doing what parents and taxpayers want, like uplifting proper education, et cetera, et cetera. So without school boards, parents would lose direct representation in how schools are run. A lot of decisions would be made behind closed doors. We wouldn't have a say really in what gets passed, what gets taught, where money goes, et cetera. Centralizing control in the province would mean that there would be less transparency and fewer ways for parents to be heard. So this is kind of ties into our education minister in Ontario, Paul Calandra and Doug Ford. Threatening to take control over our school boards. So that's problematic because that would be that we wouldn't have a say in what happens in our school boards anymore. It would go straight to the government, decisions made behind closed doors. So if school boards were removed, parents would lose their local voice in education decisions. Taxpayers would also lose their voice in where they thought their tax dollars should go regarding education. All the power would shift to the provincial government and unelected bureaucrats as opposed to our elected trustees. So the decision about curriculum policies and programs would be made without community input. It would be harder for parents to bring concerns forward. And it would be harder to hold anyone accountable. Transparency would disappear, so there'd be fewer public meetings and less access to the decision makers. Families would have no direct representatives to stand up for their values or their children's needs. And parental rights would become weakened and schools would move further from the communities they serve. So if you're in Ontario right now, I'm sure you've heard that Doug Ford and Paul Calandra have threatened to eliminate school boards. For good cause, there's been a lot of misuse of money, but that's not what Parents First Educators is worried about. Right now, specifically, it would also impact parental rights. Because it would give the government a lot more centralized control over education. We've already seen Doug Ford broke his promise to repeal Kathleen Winn's sex ed. So all the gender ideology and indoctrination being taught in schools would certainly not improve if the government centralized the education system. Local parents' voices would be silenced, as I mentioned before. So PAF is working to educate and mobilize families before it's too late. And hopefully spread awareness as to why school board trustees and school boards are important in Canada, in Ontario, et cetera. So what's at stake with all of this? Parental rights involves knowing what your child is being taught, knowing what books they have access to in the school libraries. Knowing what things their teachers can and can't teach. There's transparency at stake. That's your access to decisions and meetings. Freedom to raise your children according to your values. And accountability ensuring schools serve the families and not political agendas. So more specifically towards the gender ideology and radical sex ed curriculum. Many boards have adopted policies that are very confusing. I'm sure all of you guys are very well aware. We send a lot of emails out about what's going on in school boards. A lot of you maybe work in school boards or have seen what goes on, have kids in schools. But a lot of the decisions that are made, parents are often shut out of. There have been a lot of instances in board meetings where parents have come forward with very legitimate concerns. And they've been silenced, removed, picked out, et cetera. And an important part of trustees is that they can reject harmful materials. They can vote for or against motions that would put either put worse things in schools or take them away. And then lastly, of course, with the right people in office, we can see a real change in our school boards and we can see positive changes. So what can we do? Because this all seems very like big and how the heck do we do anything? So you can start at a very local level. Pay attention to your local school board. Pay attention when they have votes. A lot of that stuff is accessible online. You can see the meetings. They often post meeting recordings. You can also go to your local school board meetings. You can attend meetings if you can and delegate. Delegating is when you go to bring an issue forward at a meeting to the Board of Trustees and the Director of Education. If there's specific issues that you're wanting to discuss, you can email or call your local trustees. Because they're elected to serve you. They're elected to bring your ideas and transparency between you and the school board. The other thing you can do that we really push is that you can consider running for trustee in your local school board. So we have the municipal election coming up. I believe British Columbia has one coming up in October twenty twenty six. Ontario certainly does. There may be a few other provinces that do as well, but consider running for trustee. You don't have to be a parent with kids in the school board. You just have to be a taxpaying individual in that board. And we need good trustees. So the twenty twenty six elections. As I've been saying, we need parent-focused, common sense candidates. If you're interested in running, reach out to us because we will, we're gonna do more webinars as the election comes closer. And we can offer training and support from when you're thinking about running all the way through to like helping you with your campaign and then communicating with you and helping you if you get elected. What does that look like after? PAF can help you every step of the way through that. So if it is daunting, if you're not totally aware of what it involves, but we can help you with that. If you definitely aren't gonna run, but you really see the need for good trustees. You can help out your local trustees. If there's other people running. They they often need help with a lot of volunteer stuff, door knockers, door-to-door canvassing, et cetera. So consider helping out your local trustees who are running if you yourself are not able to. So then we get to the next question. Who should run? So really, anyone, any any citizen who's over the age of eighteen. Canadian citizen or permanent resident can run in for a school board trustee. Your parent, grandparent, a teacher, or just a concerned citizen. If you believe that parents are the primary educators. If you want to restore transparency and truth in schools. If you care about protecting children from gender ideology, radical sex ed agendas, and it's on and on and on. Ordinary people can make an extraordinary difference. We can make a difference if we stand up. We can make a difference if we're talking about this, discussing this, pushing for change. So our call to action. So you can stay in, PAF sends out emails weekly. A lot of you are on our email list. I think that's probably how you found out about this webinar. But you can share our emails, share these issues to family and friends. Keep them in the loop, make them aware. As I mentioned before, you can attend your local board meetings. Consider running or encourage somebody else to run if you know of someone who'd be a really good candidate. You can donate to the candidates' campaigns or volunteer to help them. You can volunteer to help PAF. If we work together, we really can make a difference with parental rights, even though it does sometimes feel like an uphill battle. We can, we can make a difference. There's a lot of people out there who want to see change. And teamwork can make that happen. So that's all I have for my presentation. I believe Paula and
Thank you.
Michael had. I don't know how to stop.
If I can just say, if you're running for the Catholic School Board, you have to be eighteen years of age and you have to be a Catholic to run in the Catholic School Board. You can't be an Anglican or something else. You need to be a Catholic.
Yes, thank you for that important distinction, Michael. That's that's true. If you're running, if you want to run for a trustee in the public board, you don't have to be Catholic, of course, but if you want to run the Catholic Board, which many, many many PAF supporters are Catholic, then you would have to be a baptized Catholic. So we are going to move on to speaking with our special guests now with Mr. Del Grande and Mrs. De Medo Giovanotti. So thank you both for being with us tonight. And thank you, Amelia, for that presentation. It was very informative and I'm certainly hoping that anyone who is thinking of running for trustee potentially was inspired or, you know, will come forward with questions and come to us for support because we're here to help. And if you are thinking of running for trustee, please send us an email. And we're more than happy to to talk about this with you because it's important that we plan ahead. You know, we're less than a year away now from from those elections. And I hope that this presentation helped clarify what a trustee is and what the importance of the school boards are. So we're going to begin by asking some questions of our two trustees here, and I think I will just ask, ask it openly and then both of you can answer for as long as you'd like. So I will begin with our first question, which is what inspired you to run as a school board trustee?
Like me to start? Mike?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, at the time, I was volunteering for a nonprofit organization with a network of citizens across Canada who share strategies and resources to defend their inalienable God-given rights. So at the time, I was actively seeking for good trustees. And in my area, the Catholic trustee that was in that position was there for about twenty years and decided to run for the councillor position. And so I was actively looking for a trustee and I met some wonderful people and I thought you should run for trustee and you should run for trustee and they said, no, thank you. So I was sitting at home one day and I said, Lord, is this something you would like me to do? And the rest is basically history. I put my name in the race and then three other people put their name in the race and I felt like I got set up there, but I just put my head down and went forward and and then I I won ultimately. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I go back to the nineties, nineteen ninety four was when I first ran and I beat an incumbent. So you can beat incumbents with the right plan. And I'm more than happy to share that at later time, but so I ran, I was on the parent council. I was very disappointed with report cards at that time, which basically said nothing about the progression of my kids in school. And I thought, well, things aren't going to happen at the local level here at the school. It's gotta happen at the board offices in Toronto. So I ran and I'm a firm believer in term limits. I think it keeps people honest and it keeps the system refreshed. So I spent three years in the nineties up to two thousand and three. From ninety four to two thousand and three, and then I left on my own accord to go to City Hall. And I spent three terms at City Hall. And my love was always education. So after I finished three terms, I left on my own accord there as well, too. And I put my name for a school trustee in two thousand and fourteen. And what I personally did at that time was just put my name in. And I guess with the following that I had, I didn't spend any money or what have you. And I got elected back in two thousand and fourteen and became the Chair of the Board and there was controversy back then at my board because of the the big deficit, the funding monies had been overspent. And we were fifty million dollars in the hole going from four million to fifty million in the hole. And I had to step in and try and guide that ship through the financial crisis in two thousand and fourteen. That's my story.
Thank you very much for that, Michael. So our second question is if you could share more about what your election process was like, so any challenges? I think who helped you? How were you supported? And, you know, because I think a lot of people might be discouraged by the by the election process. So if you could just share your experience with that for those who might be considering running.
I'll start, Paula. Okay, in my case, I had a trustee helper. And to get elected the first time around to beat an incumbent, we went door-to-door. And we started early. We started basically after April Fool's Day. Because it took that much time to hit every door and talk to people and let them know who you were, but more importantly, let them know what the record was of the previous trustee. So we pointed that out to people and people really don't know or don't follow some of the issues, et cetera. So we educated them as we went door-to-door. And we think we made two rounds, one going door-to-door and one just dropping off some literature the first go-round. In the nineteen, in the nineties, nineteen ninety four. Back then, the salary of trustees was about twenty seven thousand dollars. And then when Mike Eris came in, in my second term, it dropped to five thousand. And a lot of people disappeared because they didn't want to do it for five thousand. And that continued for some time until they bumped up the salary. I think the last salary going out during this term was roughly eighteen thousand. Paula?
So I did not have very much help at all. It was me and my son, basically. The town gives you some maps. You have to figure out which house is Catholic and which house isn't. And then you're on the road. I was on the road sometimes six, eight hours a day. And but early on, I connected with another agency that is PAF is familiar with that helped us. They were looking to help elected people getting elected in. And so I got a connection with signage and that kind of stuff, so I got some good pricing and stuff. But I didn't put my name in the race until about July. And by the time I got my, you know, brochures and everything done, I wasn't up and running till maybe late August. And and so then I went hard and and it was, it was grueling work because if you're a councillor, you have a small area. But when you're a trustee, you have the whole area. Like I have all of Calladon, all of Dufferin, whereas my counterpart on the public board, he only has Calladon. And so And so um, it was a huge area and I probably spent two thousand dollars in fuel alone. Um, but the signage and stuff, I, I think I spent a couple thousand dollars. I, it wasn't wasn't overly. And then, and then like Mike says, I think I get paid sixteen thousand a year. It, it's not, it's really um not um, the pay is really, it's listen, when I first started, I asked some questions around and I talked to some trustees and they said, um, listen Paula, I have, I think he said twenty-four hundred unread emails. He goes, what do you want for five hundred bucks a week? Seriously? And, and I thought, oh, okay. So uh, some trustees, I guess, don't um, don't um, you know, put in the work, but anyways.
By the way, you're, you're gonna need three pairs of shoes if you do the walking. I went through three pairs of uh shoes. Um, comfortable shoes you need uh, because you're doing a lot of walking. You're gonna lose the a significant amount of weight as well too in that walking. Paula, I agree with you. I, I was up from was it, what is it, sunup to sundown? Um, don't go knocking on doors uh in the night. Um, you do it around the supper time, especially the weekends. People tend to be home on the weekends. Um, so that's a bit of an insider uh in terms of being able to reach people. And the other, the other thing too, Paula, that you raised. Uh, there was confusion all the time because the public school trustees would leave literature on every door. And so when you, when you would go to a Catholic door, they would be confused because they got the public school trustee's brochure. And you're giving them your brochure now and you're explaining to them that there's a difference between public school and Catholic school. So that was the other uh roadblock that uh, that I had was um communication wise in terms of uh, people really didn't have not much knowledge about trustees in general.
Thank you. And I have a follow-up question. So can you share a little bit about how campaigns are funded? And also the type of information that the uh, the boards uh will give you, like for instance, you said the city gave you maps. Um, but you'd have to decipher on your own which doors to knock. You won't know uh which homes are Catholic and which aren't. So can you share?
No, you do. No, you do. We, we got a book. We got a book given to us from the city clerk. And the city clerk would list all the addresses and put a P for public and I guess C for Catholic. So you knew where the Catholic homes were and you would run off that. The public guys just thought it was cheaper and faster just to drop literature on every door. But like Paula said, my first campaign, I rode around on a bike because the houses were that far apart. And uh, you know, you drop one here, one around the corner, two on this street, not on that street. Um, I think the ratio Catholic to public is, I think, three to one generally, or four to one in some cases.
So for me, I had a one hundred dollar donation, but other than that, I funded the whole thing on my own. And um, uh, what, what else was that?
Your expenses are tax deductible if you win the election. If you lose, zero.
And uh, what else? What was the second part? So how was it funded and what was the second part?
Uh, my question was how, how were the campaigns funded? And then I guess the other question, uh, Michael already answered, which was the information given to you by the board, I guess, um, the map and, and which homes are Catholic and public. Sorry, my bad. I didn't quite understand when you were talking about the um.
Area map, and then they give you a list of all the names and their addresses of the Catholics. So then I would give the list to my son and he would compile the street name and give me, okay, so uh, Mary Street is number one, number three, number five. So, and then I would have, okay, now I'm here and I'm at Mary Street and it's these houses. So that's how we went.
Yeah, so it sounds like uh having um people donate to your campaign and having volunteers who would have tremendously helped. And that's uh where uh, we'd like to be, you know, active um in next year's election. So my next question is if you could share a bit about your role and your duties as a trustee?
Mike, do you want to start?
Yeah, sure. My role is policymaking, as you've indicated in your slide, and advocacy. Advocacy for the parents and the student. So I would get the phone calls when things would go wrong or bad or whatever at the school with the students, et cetera, or issues or what have you. And I would basically be advocating for them uh with the staff, with the superintendents, et cetera. And in some cases, I would ask them to come before the full board with uh their concerns and usually concerns uh most of the time are personnel type issues. So they're always conducted in private. But in terms of general types of things, uh, you know, they're, they're welcome to register at the board, our board. I think we have a limit of uh ten per. Otherwise, the whole night would be taken up with uh delegates. Um, and um, yeah, that was like the majority of the time in terms of uh of the work, there's a lot of reading, a lot of reading. And some trustees read and other trustees don't read. And that's where you get an issue of not having a smooth meeting, because not everyone's on the same page.
So I, I would also call it the complaints department. And so that's what you're getting, a lot of phone calls like that, just fully so. Because at the end of the day, the Edu- Education Act is a partnership with the parents. It's not a partnership with the province.
Um, so uh, from the next question, do you guys mind sharing a little bit about your experiences with each of the boards that you're on? They may be similar, but there may be some differences there if you guys don't mind sharing that.
You can start, Paula. You can hold me back.
Okay, start. Okay, I'll start. Yeah, okay. I think we've had some similar uh experiences, some a little worse than others. Um, I've only been doing this for three years. And uh, I've had a couple of constitutional lawyers help me um because um, of, you know, perhaps my opinion on things. And they would want me to participate in uh DEI coursework or um, they wanted to send me on a human rights uh course. And I told them that I studied our gun governing laws with top constitutional lawyer Rocco Galati. And I asked them who they would offer to educate me because I didn't want to muddy my teachings. Um, so then all that went out, out the window ultimately. Um, but um, they, they did not want me to have um, strong Catholic values, I would say. And, and even I'll, I'll read to you uh a statement that was made to me when I questioned about um, some changes that might be happening in the board and, and who's participating in those changes. And so when I question about the faith of, of these people or, or, you know, do, are they strong in their faith? I was uh, they responded to me by saying, um, so it says, to work in an environment that is being staged as defending the faith when in actual fact, the faith is being used to intimidate and judge. And so I said, is, is this indeed an actual fact? Are people being intimidated and judged under the guise of faith? So like they would, when I, when I would try and stay strong in the faith, they would come back to me and tell me basically that I'm being discriminatory towards groups, I guess, which I wasn't. I was just being um stuck in my Catholic values, that's all. Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
Well, let me say this. Uh, I've experienced both at the city level and the school board level. And in politics generally, um, there are a lot of politicians, very few leaders, if that. And uh, the challenge becomes that if you try to uh exhibit your leadership, as Paula indicated with respect to, I'm on a Catholic school board, so my expectation and parents' expectation of me is to make sure that the system is Catholic, that their kids aren't coming in and uh learning stuff that uh I would deem uh inappropriate to the teaching magisterium of the Catholic Church. And um, the government introduced something called a code of conduct, which became a weaponization of trustees across the province. So if they didn't like Paula, uh, the other guys would gang up and uh find an excuse to uh send her to reeducation camp. Uh, as I myself uh was sent to reeducation camp. Um, and it's a sad commentary because um you can argue religion from two sides of the coin. But at the end of the day, we're not individual popes. We have to follow the guidance of the church to lead us. And we can't say, well, I'll accept this, but I don't want to accept that. That's not Catholic in nature. And one of the things that people who want to run for the Catholic School Board is uh get a good housekeeping seal from uh your local pastor, as you can put on your literature. I am a uh, you know, uh, a member of Saint so-and-so. Uh, I uh attend weekly mass. And uh, you know, words that affect that you, you can distinguish yourself as a Catholic as opposed to someone who's just using the, the um position of trustee as a stepping stone to run for higher office in um other jurisdictions, whether it's NP, MPP, or um city councillor. And a majority of the trustees, that's where they get their start to go into uh further politics, let's call it, as opposed to further leadership. I, as I said, it went from school board, city council, and I went back to the school board. So for me, it wasn't uh an issue of uh trying to gain higher office because uh it, that just wasn't my goal. I think I covered it, Paula.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, in that kind of same vein, my next question is, um, what are ways that you guys feel that trustees could make the greatest impact in their boards for families and students?
You want me to take that, Paula?
Know your community, know your community. And, and if you're running for the Catholic Board, I suggest you I suggest you, you know, like have strong Catholic values. I mean, Mike has, Mike has studied theology extensively. And I've, I've studied the Bible extensively and um so you have to be convicted in your, in your values and morals. Have good values and morals. That's really all you need. And, and you know what? I, to be honest, I never studied the rule before I took it over. I just put my name in and ran the race. I never expected to win, to be honest. And I thought, well, I'm not an idiot. I'll figure it out. But, and to be honest, what do you need? A good head on your shoulders, values and morals. It's children at the end of the day that we're trying to protect.
It may, uh, ask me the question again.
Um, oh, I asked, what are the, in your opinion, greatest ways that trustees have an impact in their school boards and further parents and students that they serve?
So the issue is, you have to lead. You can't be part of the administration because the administration runs the, the system. So you have to distinguish yourselves. And there's, you know, games that are played at school boards where administrators will cozy up to this trustee or that trustee and provide them information and et cetera, et cetera. It's uh divide and conquer. And um, you know, the agendas are set by staff. They're not set by trustees, which is a big, big failure. Um, so you, you um, you have to manage the system because at the end of the day, you're accountable, not, not the bureaucrats, not the provincial government. They come to you. I always call myself the meat and the sandwich. Uh, the, the two slices of bread. One is the parents and the students and the other slice of bread is uh the administration and the politicians at the um provincial level. So um, we provide a good sandwich for people to hide behind, to blame us for everything. And uh, I'm sure one of your questions is going to come up with respect to funding and monies, et cetera. I'd love to answer that one, but I'll just leave it at, at that, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure a lot of people are curious about the funding and the money. Um, but we were, our next question was more in the line of um for parents, from your uh position, seeing school boards in classrooms, what are the things that parents should be most concerned about um, in classrooms? And maybe more specifically, because you guys are both in Ontario, in light of Ford and Calandra threatening to take control of the school boards. Um, what should, like, what should parents be concerned about? Or what are you guys' top concerns for that?
The concern that I would have as a parent and now a grandparent is what's being taught in the school or what's not being taught in the school. Um, to be succinct, parents can withdraw their children from the classroom if there's something that if sex ed or something's being taught. They don't tell you this, but you have the right to pull your child out of that uh classroom. And you can make it clear right at the beginning of the uh school year with both the principal and the teacher. Explain to them that, you know, if you want sex education, it'll come at the, in the home, not the, not at the school. So you can withdraw your kids. They don't tell you that and you can do that. And so the curriculum is very important. Uh, you want to make sure that um the curriculum that they're teaching, uh, your child, if they're in grade four, they shouldn't be at a grade two reading level. Okay? So the big problems schools have with respect to QAO, which is the um the uh, the testing that's done uh by the government, okay, indicates primarily that we fall behind on math and we fall behind on literacy. So the people that pound themselves on the chest and say, no, you know, we got a score of uh, I know, fifty-nine or fifty-eight and, you know, it was better than last year. That's not good enough. And so we can't sit back as, as trustees and pat staff on the back because everybody's uh, you know, they want to be friends to everybody. You can't be friends with everybody. Okay? You've got to do your job. And it's, and it's a tough job and it's not a popular job. You're not there to win a popularity contest. Only a popularity contest with your constituents will expect you to act on their behalf because they're busy working. Okay, working. Both parents are working, so they need us on the front line to help them.
Well, I, parent voices are very, very important. Parents need to participate. They need to be participating at school council. They need to meet the teachers. They need to know who these teachers are that are, are with their students all, with their children all day long. Um, and, and you know what? Write the emails. Everything has to be put in writing. And um, I always encourage them, you know, send it here, there. The things that I've seen, the changes that I've seen, um, all from parental voice, it's huge. Your voices are so powerful, even more powerful than mine. Your voice, the parent voice. So continue to write the emails, talk with other parents. If there's a situation happening at the school or things that you would like changed. And you know, it's even stuff like even at the parent council, you'll hear from some parents saying, you know, we raised this money and now they want us to buy smart boards with the raised money. And I'd be like, no, try not to do that. The, like, the Minister of Education has to pay for the smart boards, you know, that's extra money. But then the schools were trying to take away their pizza money from the school council. And I'm like, there's a lot going on behind the scenes. And that's why the parents need to get involved and, and participate in the school council and that kind of stuff. Because otherwise, what happens?
Paula, you're right. Document, document, document. Don't just go by word of mouth, et cetera, with anybody who we deal in the school system, even with trustees. Document that you've spoken to them, you said this, um, you know, feedback, et cetera. They hate that with a passion. They don't want you to document and they don't want you to come to the board to complain. So they'll do everything possible to avoid, to avoid that. But you have the right to document and you have the right through your trustee to come to the board and uh put forward your grievance.
Thank you very much to both of you for those answers. Um, I think uh, that's very helpful because a lot of parents um are often unsure what they can do. And they often feel lost or helpless. And I mean, it's very encouraging to hear that parents um have more power than they think they do. Um, and like you said, Paula, even more than, even more than the trustees. Um, I, I, I just uh, we're gonna wrap up with the last question and then we're gonna move to Q and A. Um, but I wanted to um, uh, before I get to our last question, I wanted to, to ask, um, what, what can parents do? And I guess if someone's considering running for trustee um, as well, what, what can that person do to, to kind of help spread awareness or kind of help expose, for lack of better word, those who are running um, uh, to be trustee for, for political gain, like you mentioned, Michael, to to either as a stepping stone. I mean, not that there's any rules against that, but as a stepping stone to become a councillor or an MP or an MPP. Or um, and in my opinion, something that's worse, um, for reasons um, you know, that are for, for, and I guess it's, it's hard for us to express this, but for, for, for the sake of um indoctrinating children. We see a lot of school boards where we have someone running for trustee and it's very clear they have a political agenda. And it's very clear that they are interested. Um, they have a vested interest in, in, in um increasing the um edu- the sex ed education. And you know, um, teaching children things that are age inappropriate. But they have a very uh political and uh, like oftentimes Marxist ide- ideology uh uh that they want to bring into the schools. So what can parents do and what can trustees do? Um, as someone who wants to run for trustee potentially to kind of expose, uh, you know, their, the counterpart, someone who's running a- against them? Is someone who wants to run for trustee potentially to kind of expose, you know, their counterpart, someone who's running a- against them?
Be brave, be brave, pray and the Lord will give you the words, the Lord will give you the support, the Lord will put everything in front of you.
The Lord helps those who help themselves, so you have to make sure that uh it's communicated what those people are all about. Uh you need to communicate what the incumbent was all about, their voting record, you know, they voted to put up this flag or that flag or. Decided that the, they're going to allow this and allow that, allow things that are contrary to the faith. Which again, people don't know. When you tell people, they get upset when you mention who they are and they're on record. So you're not, you're you're not uh, you know, going to court. For stating the obvious, that it's in the public record that they voted this way or that way.
Thank you. No, that's very helpful. I think, um you know, like you said, be brave. I think you just have to say it how it is. And so, you know, I I guess um not be afraid of of coming off on the attack, but you know, just tell the truth. So you know, this person is, you know, they voted for this or they want to push for this. And I think it's important that people are blunt. And uh because unfortunately, a lot of parents are just kind of asleep and they're not paying attention. And when it comes to the elections, they just kind of. They didn't do their research, they don't know who's running and they'll take any name. Uh at least that's what I find in my experience. A lot of people are least involved, least informed when it comes to those kind of municipal elections. So our last question, um to wrap up this portion before we move to Q and A is. Why should people care if they don't have children in the Catholic or public schools anymore if they are grandparents?
Well, from a tax point of view, um. Funding is now on a per pupil basis. It was different in the old days, in the older days, uh that was the case, but. Uh I, I was a parent once and um. I'm now a grandparent. So my expectation is that we are supposed to live in a civilized society. Where right is right and wrong is wrong. And not the other way around, uh wrong is not right and right is not wrong. But that's the kind of society that we're in. Uh so we have to be on guard. For that because again. Today's kids that are coming out to your school are the ones that are going to be uh. Looking after you at the old age home or, you know, be your doctor, et cetera, et cetera. So you want a uh an educated society, you want a society that's empathetic. Uh you want a society that respects their elders. That's sort of like was gone by the wayside in a lot of cases. Um so it's those values that that make for a, a better. Society, better caring society when you have children that are brought up. In the correct ways.
Thank you, and I think that's especially important because I know a lot of parents, um unfortunately, now are choosing to not not send their children to. Catholic or public schools. They might homeschool or they might choose a private school. But it is still so important that we're involved um in in the school boards because, like you said, we're taxpayers. And it's also just for the betterment of Canada, for the betterment of society. If you care about people. And even if you're homeschooling your children, they're going to have friends who are in the public system. Um so it's it's really just, it's about caring for for the children and for the future of our nation. So. Um thank you very much for that, Michael. And Paula, if there's anything you'd like to add. Um you uh you can, and if not, we'll move to Q and A.
Um I I. I just wanted to say, yeah, it is important, uh regardless if you have kids in the system or not, I think. Um uh we have to hold them to account. They they have our money. They have our money and our kids, right? So you want to make sure that they're doing things right.
I agree. Uh well, thank you so much. Um I would like to now open it up to uh. Q and A. There is a Q and A box um on the bottom of your screens and you can see and you can type a question in into there. Um there's also the chat, but um what's nice about Zoom webinar is that they have this Q and A feature. So anyone can type uh that in and it's easier for me to see there. However, uh if you can't find it, there's also the chat.
Did want to make a comment that I went to visit um Minister. Calandra, Paul Calandra, on September sixth, he had a barbecue out in Stoville. And I asked him and I recorded the conversation and I wrote down. Uh the transcript. So on September sixth, I asked him, because he's taken over both of our boards. The largest boards in Ontario, he's taken over. So I said, um so and that was the end of school, the last day of school in June, so this is September sixth. And I said, uh when do we anticipate getting our boards back? And his response was. I've said on the news media many times, the governance model is under review. And at the same time, reviewing whether the trustees should have the authority. Of running these school boards. And so like I said earlier, the Education Act is a partnership with the parents and the province. The province. Who took over our local municipal boards, municipal boards. Who took it over a few decades back is now suggesting or reviewing. Whether the trustee, the elected trustee elected by their own communities. Have. Whether the trustees should have the authority of running these school boards.
The fundamental issue.
You're going to vote somebody in and now Paul Calander says. Let me see, let me see if we have the authority.
Uh can I just say the crisis is is basically, they give you a hundred dollars. But they load you up with a hundred and twenty dollars in costs.
And I can explain.
Obviously, the school boards can't make the budget because their costs are a hundred. And twenty dollars versus the hundred that they get. I'll give you an example. In our board, they gave us twenty million dollars for absenteeism, okay? Of all the employee groups. Well, we spent sixty million. And that forty million dollars, we don't get any compensation for that. And ironically. It's the province that makes the negotiations with all the unions. We don't, we don't. Participate in that. So if they make a deal with the unions and they know that they're all taking their sixteen days. How can we possibly balance the books? When they don't take that into account? And then we get blamed for that? And the other irony for myself personally is, I couldn't vote on the budget. Because uh one of my relatives works for the board, so I had to declare a conflict of interest. But yet I get lumped in with everybody else as if I voted for the budgets or had the say with respect to the budgets. It's um, again, it's a game of politics. And they're they're walking a thin line when it comes to the Catholic boards. Because we are constitutionally protected, so we're going to see how they get around that one.
So across Canada, they have taken over uh school boards successfully. Uh New Brunswick ninety-six, PEI in twenty sixteen. Um Nova Scotia twenty eighteen, Quebec twenty twenty. Then they went into Manitoba in twenty twenty-one. Manitoba resisted. They still have their elected trustees. Currently, they're in Ontario. It's Ontario's turn now. So. Um you guys are going to have to decide if you want elected school board trustees or you want the province to take over everything. And I'll have you know that. Uh the province, these these. These um ministers of education. Are the same people that mandate us. To ask your children inappropriate questions about their gender and other things. Were mandated by these people. And Stephen Leche, when he was the Minister of Education, was sending us emails. A day before June, telling us to participate in Pride Month, encouraging us to participate in Pride, to Catholic schools. Catholic schools. Uh and so I've I've contacted lawyers and I have a huge binder of evidence. That proves that our Catholic faith is one hundred percent protected. And we have all the authority in the world to promote Catholic teachings. And when I spoke to Calandra, uh after he's made that statement, he went off to say, he mentioned. Um Nova Scotia and Quebec have eliminated their trustees. And then he said, the heroes are the actual parents, the ratepayers, the students and the teachers. And it's the trustees like you is why we are stepping in and firing you all.
Wow, um that's that's shocking. Um so I, if you, if you allow, I'm just going to get to the questions. There are a lot about the school board takeover. So I'm glad we we started talking about that kind of naturally. Um so we we saw in the news today that Bill thirty-three passed. Um and there were protests at Queens Park. Um someone's asking, why is Doug Ford trying to dismantle the school board? So I know you've touched on that a little bit, but I guess this is a more direct question. Um you know, what's the reason? Beyond just the corruption in the, in the wards and the spending?
Full control, they want full control, a full. Full, full control state. And these, these contracts, like, so I've only been here three years. And then when, you know, our board is about a hundred million dollars in deficit. And when I sit down and talk to the Director of Education, these are my notes. Uh the union contracts with the staff, we have no choice as trustees but to accept the deals. There was, there's, they've been eliminating the voice of the trustee for decades. Bill one seventy-seven was passed, I believe, when Kathleen Winn was in power. Uh which basically silenced the voice of the trustee as far as curriculum. And they basically said, okay, you have some voice as far as budget. Um and so uh this particular contract that's causing a deficit, it was done two contracts ago before COVID. It was done at the central table with Ontario Catholic School Board Trustee Association, the Crown and the Unions. And um it's this, the OECTA staff have. Fully paid eleven days per year sick days. Plus they have access to one hundred and twenty days of their salary reduced to ninety percent. And so that goes into the short-term disability bank. Uh and the teachers are just dipping in. The conversations with staff to see if they are abusing them are done. However, there's no consequences. So a teacher can respectfully take up to one hundred and thirty-one. Days at ninety percent. And it's costing us an awful lot of money.
Actually, Paul, it's sixteen days. I I double checked the numbers.
I know, so. So I'm not sure, like that, that was the conversation I had not long ago and those were the exact. So unless the information that came to me is off, but I, that's what my notes that I wrote down.
So I'm thinking, is there anything you'd like to add to that, Michael?
No, uh you know, as I said, it, listen, I've always said, I've always been quoted. Health and education are not about health and education. It's all about politics.
I think we could be more entrepreneurial as school boards. I always tell them, listen, I go in and I see the book sale, book, book sales, book fairs at the school. Not one Catholic book in there. And I said, why aren't you selling little Catholic books and stuff like that? You know, oh, we can't find a supplier, but be more entrepreneurial. We could be paying for the kids. You know, trips to go, you know, grade eight retreats or something. We're not entrepreneurial enough. Like I said, you know, we, why, I, you know, there's the public school, they do screen printing. Why don't we do screen printing? And we could do our own screen printing for our T-shirts in our schools. Why are we outsourcing that? So there's many ways that we could be more entrepreneurial. However, you know. We don't, the, there's not the mindset there at the school board. The mindset is. Give me the money from the province and let's figure it out. Whereas if we had more business sense, I guess we could. Figure out better, but at the same time, these, these contracts, we're we're not negotiating these contracts, but we're getting fully blamed for them. I mean, I wasn't there to negotiate them, but I'm getting the blame for them, that's all.
So someone is asking, what is going to happen with boards where trustees have been replaced by a provincial supervisor? What's going to happen in next fall's election?
Agenda is all boards will be taken over. The, listen, he said that to me twice in that conversation. If I was to read the other sentence that he said to me, it's even worse.
So in next fall's election, um you suspect there might not be uh trustees running, is that what? Because this is what the person's asking.
Strong possibility, you know, even boards that.
That's the agenda, that's the agenda. It's already in.
They said, they said that, uh he's, he has said that. A number of times and a number of places that uh his goal is to get rid of uh the trustees.
So he's got written, gotten rid of us. There's eleven trustees at sixteen thousand dollars a head. And he's got a superintendent there upwards of three hundred thousand dollars a year. There's no savings there. If anything, you're paying a lot more. Um and and the thing is that, so so they, now they've told them to start this uh program. It's called the Student and Family Support Office. So basically, there's a superintendent at the board office who's now going to be taking in all the complaints. So is it going to be like what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas? I don't know, but um we're not going to hear about it. I'm not going to know anything that's going on. I mean, I re, we rarely get to find out what's going on anyways, but. If you, if you're going to be centralizing and con- collecting all your complaints in your own department. I don't know, it's kind of, I don't know. I don't know.
Mike, somebody's asking what you mean by constitutionally protect, constitutional protection for Catholic school boards. Can you please clarify? Uh or expand on that?
Our religious rights, our religious rights as Catholics are one hundred percent protected. And as a Catholic school board, like, so not everybody could say, you know, we're Catholic and we're doing it this way. We're a Catholic board. When you're Catholic, we're Catholic. We don't have to, we don't have to bow down to other faiths and everything else. We're Catholic. And our rights are one hundred percent protected and we can promote the Catholic faith. Completely. We don't have to alter it at all. We. And the thing is, if you don't use your rights, you will lose your rights. If you don't use your rights, you will lose your rights.
Prior to Confederation, uh the Catholic Church, Catholics had their own hospitals and schools, et cetera, et cetera. And when Confederation was put together, uh at that time Quebec was more Catholic than Ontario. But the deal was that um Catholics would have their faith protected in the schools and that they would have representation. For those schools. So this is going to be kind of interesting to see what what transpires. I'm kind of disappointed because with all the uh school trustees. If everybody had put in a thousand dollars, we should have got some lawyers because our association has done squat. We should have got some lawyers to challenge some of this stuff. And we just sit quiet in the dark and uh they just trample over us.
And we don't feel supported by our association. And from my understanding, I've only been doing this three years, Mike, Mike's been doing it longer, but. From my understanding is the Minister of Education will not talk to the trustees. You have to go through your association. So, but the association is getting paid way more than a trustee. And they're sitting on all kinds of money. Uh that they've been getting paid, ratepayer money, uh and they should be using it to get their trustees back to work. And so I, when I contacted the association, I said, I said, is this a failure to represent? You're our association and you're not representing us. Is this a failure to represent? And and. You know, it's a question, it's a question.
Um thank you. Someone actually has an interesting question here. So um they've said that the frontline teachers are inundated with requirements from the school board. And uh they think the boards have become too large and too administrative. Um he's asking, how can we reduce the amount of unnecessary administration? And there's two questions, so I'm going to kind of lump them together. They've also said that they have a trustee who supports the progressive agenda. And in some ways, they're happy that the uh PC government has taken over the school board. So in the sense that the the school board has has gotten very uh woke and progressive. However, I think trustees are important. It's important to make that distinction. You can have bad trustees, but good trustees are much more powerful. And it's better to have good trustees than to have no trustees at all. Um so uh they're asking, you know, their trustee's not responsive to their concerns, what can they do?
Vote them out next go round if they, they're for election and point that record out to people when you go knocking doors, that this guy doesn't answer questions. Make sure you're documented, you know?
Yes, and if you see something that. Red tape or whatever, whatever is is or too too much, you know, at the top or whatever, put it in writing. Address it to somebody, complain, 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 and get other people in board too. The more the merrier. Send the emails and say, listen, this needs to be changed. This is a waste of money. Go right up to the Minister of Education, go right up to Doug Ford. Listen, many times I've told my parents, you go as far as you need to go to get results. And they they do, they get results. But if there is suggestions, if there is suggestions, bring them forward. And uh if there is uh people that have been elected in that you disagree with or whatever, well. You know, hang in there and wait till the next turn and maybe you step in too, be brave.
We have one person asking, um they said, both guests have extensive backgrounds that helped them to be great represent, representatives. Can an average mom still have an impact? I feel if I ran, I could not achieve a sliver of what your guests have.
I was a quiet stay-at-home mom, shy, never on social media, nothing. Um I I was, I never spoke in public or anything and and you can ask Celine, I'm like, listen, I'm I'm not. When she approached me to attend here, I said. You know, but it, listen. If it's, if if the Lord is pushing you to do something, just roll the dice and try. Roll the dice and try, you've got, you've really got nothing to lose. Be brave and and be strong in your condition. Don't be wishy-washy. Like have, have your own, you know, values and morals and show people what you're about. And and then if it's, if it is just. And and then if it's, if it is just for you, if it's right for you, and then it'll happen, it'll just happen. Don't be scared.
Thank you, Paula. Um, I think we're gonna-
Call me. You can call me for tips if you want to.
Yes, uh, thank you for uh, for that, and I think it's very important that um, that the the good trustees that we have are available also to to mentor those who are considering running, because I think it's important that we're organized, and you know, there are, there are a lot of boards, and uh, you know, not just in Ontario, but throughout Canada. Um, you know, um, there's a lot of land to cover. It's a, we have big, quite a, you know, cadence population in a lot of areas, so so where you know people, you know, please, you know, encourage, encourage moms and and and, you know, dads and grandparents, people you know who you think might make a good trustee, encourage them, and then we can get them in touch with each other, and it's important that we support one another.
I am more than happy to assist faith in any way I can, and anybody that wants to run. I have beaten two incumbents, one at City Hall and one at the school board, okay? So I know how it's done, because I've done it myself. The first time I ran, I lost by ten votes. Okay, ten votes, knocking doors, and having zero signs, okay, zero signs during my first run. I learned a lot during my first run, and uh, it was grueling, but I was ready in the next go-round, the following, don't, you know, just because you lost in an election, and if it was close, um, you're close enough to do it again to win.
I suggest spend the money on on brochures and signage and stuff, because name recognition is important. If you, you know, spend the money and that kind of stuff. But I do wanna, I I I am gonna read to you this one last stat- sentence that um, during the conversation with Paul Calandra, and uh, it's pretty brutal, but I'll read it to you. You have absolutely and positively failed at your mission to provide the best possible Catholic education, and that is why you are all getting fired. That's what he said to me. I'm telling you, he doesn't want trustees in Ontario. But I don't know what the solution is.
You know, uh, I gotta say, though, there is a point, when you have uh, a bad group of trustees and a and a board, it reflects on everybody in the province. And so, you know, if they're if they're spending money uh, on themselves and in a, in a stupid kind of way, um, they should be punished for that. We shouldn't punish everybody. Um, you've got auditors and stuff that that can go into boards, they can check the expense reports. And our board, I know with the other boards, everything is is put online. Everything that we spend, I spend, is online. So anybody can go there anytime and see what we're spending, or, you know, on on what stuff. So, um-
And I also want, for those trustees, like that big story, the trustees, Brant Haldeman, that went off to Italy, the the story about that was, the democratic vote system works perfectly fine in this country, the democratic system, okay? Because what happened in that situation was, once the ratepayer caught on what was happening, then the media caught on to what was happening. They were fully exposed, they were publicly shamed, they had to repay back what they spent, and then they won't be running for reelection. Problem solved. Do we need Paul Calandra to take over all our boards? We can handle our own boards. And in fact, one of my ratepayers asked Paul Calandra, Mr. Calander, you keep saying that the money that you give to the boards has to go directly to the students. I'm asking you, you have seventeen hundred employees at the Minister of Education, and not one of them has FaceTime with a child. Not one of Paul Calander's seventeen hundred employees at the minister level is has FaceTime with a child. So we are collecting our municipal money, we're paying our property taxes that are going up every year, okay? And we're paying into that, and at one point, it stayed here in our municipalities, and it supported our local boards. And we had complete control over it. But then at some point, the province stepped in, took the purse from us, and now, what is this word saying? And at the same time, we are reviewing whether the trustees should have the authority of running these school boards. Who took the authority away from us? We always had the authority. Or we should have always had the authority.
Yeah, so it's it's very clear that there's an agenda here, uh-
Our money, it's our money.
Yeah, but it it looks like they're trying to take over the school board, and you know, thank you for sharing what the minister said to you, because I think it should really wake parents up um, to uh, to what the government is trying to do, and um, I I think as parents, um, you know, um, we have power and we need to band together, and um, as, and and not just parents, you know, people who are concerned about the integrity of our democratic process, like you mentioned, and also just, you know, people who care about children and the and education. I think uh, trustees are the last line of defense, and and now we have the Ford government trying to abolish them, and it's it's ridiculous in a sense. It's ironic, because they claim that the school boards have gotten too progressive and ideological, and they are the very reason for that.
And and Celine, when you spoke earlier on about there's been misuse of money, there's been misuse of money in every level of government? Way huge, like all these government entities are 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 gonna end up collapsing at some point. How can they sustain this? So it's, there's a lot of waste, absolutely. Uh, but a trustee's pay at sixteen thousand dollars, is that a waste of money, really? I'm sure we can cut back other places.
Indeed, thank you. Um, all right, you know what, since I can see the time, it's it's getting quite late. I think we covered most questions, and you know, please, anyone, uh, feel free to send us an email, and um, if you'd like to get in touch, uh, I know uh, uh, Mike and and Paula have offered to um, uh, mentor any of you who are considering running for trustee, so uh, we can provide that connection if that's all right with them. We'll 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 be in touch with them, of course. But um, so if anyone would like to um, have their question answered, uh, please feel free to email us, um, uh, just unfortunately, because you know, it's a, it's a school night, we're gonna have to to wrap up now. Um, but I would like to thank you both for your time this evening. Um, it was a truly, truly valuable um, to all of our attendees, and we've recorded this meeting so that those who aren't able to attend can can watch it later. And we hope that the information that Amelia, um, was it, was providing through the uh, presentation was helpful and informative to you all.
Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And Paula. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Bye.
Bye.